I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron, Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan. Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next recommended action is that we go into closed session, and the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
The motion carries. Good evening. The next recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the death of a Framed High School teaching assistant who passed away Sunday, June 14th. Ray Roth was a longtime member of the Viking family, serving our students in the classroom and as a water polo coach. He will be missed by colleagues and students. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Ray's life and legacy. Thank you. We do not have any recognitions this evening, so that will take us right to the public comments. And next on our agenda is the public comments, and the board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute left. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Schumacher at this end of the table. All right. Our first speaker is Joyce Slavik.
Hello, my name is Joyce Slavik. I am a parent and community member in the district. Today I want to talk about the dangers of something called Project 2025 and its impact on public education. Project 2025 is a 900-page mandate for leadership that creates an agenda for the next Republican administration. It spells out a vision for America where book bans are the norm and discrimination based on race, sex, gender, or religion is accepted. It attacks our fundamental freedoms and democratic principles. It is the GOP Trump vision for America. I'm bringing it up here because of the specific impacts it would have on our schools, and there are three specific Project 2025 goals that would impact our schools, community, and students. The first one is it will end public education. We've seen conservative efforts nationwide to undermine public education, so it's no surprise that Project 2025 would come after it on the federal level. The plan suggests eliminating teachers' ability to organize together, overhauling the U.S. Department of Education's curriculum to align with extremist viewpoints, and ultimately eliminating the Department of Education. Instead of supporting public education, the plan would divert public money to private and religious schools. The second main goal, persecution of LGBTQ+ Americans. Project 2025 is shameless in its attack on human rights, particularly for LGBTQ+ people. The plan demonizes and potentially criminalizes transgender people. It would remove federal protections for all LGBTQ+ people, allowing them to be fired for their sexual or gender identity. The plan suggests conversion therapy for LGBTQ+ people. Project 2025 says that the U.S. government should maintain a biblically-based definition of marriage and family that have heterosexual, two-parent families only. We've seen this hateful rhetoric even in our district, with demands, demand books that feature LGBTQ+ characters and stories. And finally, it will encourage racial discrimination. The authors of Project 2025 don't like the progress that's been made to end institutionalized racism and increase diversity, racial equity, and inclusion in America, and we still have a long way to go. The plan would ban these efforts in the federal government and potentially fire government workers who have participated in DEI training. They would stop federal agencies from collecting data that could be used to address racial inequality. And the plan would end the Fair Housing Act, which would allow housing discrimination against non-white Americans. This would undoubtedly filter down into states and local municipalities and schools, including D-211, where we have a strong commitment to DEI. District 211 has a longstanding tradition of providing outstanding educational opportunities for its students and is a welcome place for people of all backgrounds. I hope we can continue this into the future by stopping Project 2025. Be sure to vote this November. Public education and our democracy depends on our votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Bennett?
I am Lee Bennett, father of two Palatine graduates. Volleyball is the world's most popular sport. Perhaps you think this conclusion is ridiculous. Everybody knows billions watch Soccer's World Cup. In our country, millions watch the Super Bowl each year. How can anyone claim that a mere Olympic sport like volleyball is more popular? We only watch it every four years. What if we seek to determine which sports people are playing instead of just watching on TV? While 100 million watch the Super Bowl, only about 100 will play in it. Even fewer players will get into a World Cup match. Well, the 2014 survey of all the sports organizing bodies attempted to count the participants of each sport across the globe. When all the known participants were tallied, volleyball came out on top. The authors of this survey and I realize there are likely more soccer players, as FIFA is known for having very poor accounting practices. It will come as no surprise that professional sports have commercial goals. What are the goals of our education and our education system in regards to sports? I think we should be encouraging participation over consumption of sports entertainment. The power of the market will ensure the next generation is watching Super Bowl commercials even without our help. Encouraging our increasingly overweight population to keep moving is the higher-value public good. Volleyball may have fewer fans in the stands, but many are actually playing it for a lifetime. So what does this have to do with District 211? Public schools, including those of this district, promote the myth that volleyball is primarily a sport for girls. In the mid-'90s, a big step in addressing this was made when the IHSA and this district first offered boys volleyball. During the last 30 years, around the U.S. and in Chicagoland in particular, boys and men's volleyball has grown significantly. Right here, District 15 will now offer interscholastic volleyball for all their students. With both feeder districts now supplying volleyball players, I recommend that District 211 open up the pipeline for sophomore boys. The district offers five volleyball teams for the girls, but only three for the boys. So it is a common story that boys who eventually make a significant contribution on varsity their senior year didn't have a team to play on their sophomore year. I asked the district, why doesn't it add another boys volleyball team like many Chicago and Lake County schools have? I expect the rationale will include the consideration of the overall sports offerings. How are these sports offerings changing? Last year, the IHSA dropped the state playoff series, so the future of boys gymnastics is questionable in our high schools. Dance, with predominantly female participation, was added last year. The current teacher's contract includes provisions for the expansion of girls wrestling. Next year's plans add yet another girls-only sport. Establishing girls' flag football program is an investment in future Super Bowl ad revenue. Time will tell if it will lead to more women making competitive sports a healthy lifetime activity. My hypothetical debate partner might use the NFHS data to indicate that volleyball is more popu-- isn't popular with the boys. It's certainly the most popular team sport for girls, and volleyball has been closing in on track and field for the top sport in girls' participation. A closer look--
You have one minute remaining.
--the closer look at this NFHS data indicates that boys volleyball isn't popular with school districts. When schools offer volleyball for boys, their participation is 90% of the girls. In adulthood, volleyball has more male participants. This includes men like myself who feel betrayed by our schools for hiding the value of volleyball participation from us throughout middle school, high school, and university. The time has come for District 211 to offer 80% of the girls' volleyball opportunity instead of just 60. Please add a sophomore boys volleyball team for our high schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. That will take us to presentations. We do not have any presentations at this time. The next item is our consent agenda. I have a request to pull Letter C, the Resolutions Authorizing Intervention in Proceedings Before the State Property Tax Appeal Board. Is there anything else that a board member would like to have pulled?
Excuse me, Madam President. Do we have to vote on the minutes as an item because I was not present?
We will.
Okay.
There's that's--
So you mean--
I'm just trying to see if there's anything else--
Beyond the usual.
--that they would like to have pulled from the consent agenda. I know Letter C needs to be pulled.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we're going to have three motions, three separate motions. The first recommended action-- recommended motion is that the consent agenda, with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 20th, '24, 2024, and the removal of Letter C, Resolutions Authorizing Intervention in Proceedings Before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, be removed and the remaining consent agenda items be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
The motion carries. The next recommended action is that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 202024 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion there? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Abstained.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
The motion carries. And the next item is the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the Resolutions Authorizing Intervention in Proceedings Before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, which seek assessed valuation reductions in excess of $100,000 for property tax year 2023. And further authorize Franzic as the Board of Education's legal representative to file requests to intervene in appeal proceedings forms with the Property Tax Appeal Board on the properties for which the district received notification of appeal. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. That then takes us to our special reports, the Freedom of Information Act request. That's an information item there. Are there any questions there? Okay. Then the next item would be the 2024-2025 Tentative Budget for Transportation Fund. It's open for discussion, and Dr. Small.
The Business Office continues to prepare the 2024-2025 annual budget and presents funds as they are available. The Transportation Fund budget is shared tonight, and the ONM Fund and Educational Fund will be presented with a tentative budget as a whole at the August board meeting. As a reminder, at the August board meeting, the board takes action to allow for public inspection of the budget for 30 days prior to its adoption at the September meeting. The budget must be adopted by September 30th of each year.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski.
I shared these questions with the superintendent prior, so hopefully it won't be too big of a deal. My first question is, the '23 operating levy passed on November 9th, 2023 had the transportation fund amount of $10 million and an increase of 5.6% over the 2022 amount. Our revenue from property taxes in this proposed budget is projected to be 1.85% lower. Why is the property tax revenue not based off of the 5.6% increase or any increase to the actual?
I can understand the confusion on that. There's a couple things that are at play here. One is just a reminder that we never receive 100% of what is levied, so there's always a reduction from the amount of the levy. The other is the timing of how the payments are made, so we've already paid the first or received the first installment, and we had a very high collection rate last year, twofold. I think we received more in that installment than we had anticipated. The other thing is we had very, very few tax refunds next year. So in this budget, you'll see the adjustment for that, and you also see the tax refunds almost go up by about two and a half times because of the delay from the county and the catch-up period of those refunds that we anticipate coming through.
So we're projecting almost 2% lower?
In this fund for this year, yes. But again, we were over budget last year with the additional collections in the levy.
Why is the tentative budget interest 13% lower than the prior when we have an opening fund balance that's 37% greater than the prior actual?
The, as you know, we have had very, very favorable interest earnings on our investments. While we expect to see those continue through this year, we do expect everything that we have, the sources that we follow, and through our investing consultants, we are projecting that those interest earnings will decline, and that is what is leading to the decline in that area of the budget.
40% drop in interest on a larger balance is what we have projected on there.
No, we will not decrease by 40%.
Or 13% lower on the interest against the 40% greater. Okay. All right. The state income for the regular transportation appears to drop by almost 20%, assuming this accounts for the four payments of equal amounts relative to 2023, 2024 payments. Has the state confirmed that the funding will also be reduced by 20% and that the four quarterly payments will not increase to balance out the prior year?
Yes, so the reduction in the budget is due to the number of payments that we received in fiscal year '24. We typically budget four and receive four. Last year, we budgeted four and received five. So we are owed--
Before you go further, can you explain the five? We're not giving you an extra payment.
Correct. Yep. So we are owed four. We typically, in a budget year, we receive one that's in arrears from the prior year, and then we get three, and we're constantly in that cycle of having one that's paid in arrears. In this particular year, last year, I believe, we received our fourth payment on July 1st, so it was recorded in the fiscal year. This year, we got it a week earlier. So while it appears inflated with five payments, it is just a matter of timing. We did budget that we will receive all four of the payments that are owed to us in the upcoming fiscal year. However, I will tell you that it is possible that we, they revert back to their old payment schedules and we receive three. So that is what the 20% reduction is, is just the adjustment in the payment. There is also discussion of further proration in the category, in the reimbursement for education. I don't, there's a timing delay in when our claim is submitted, so I don't have the exact numbers on that yet and what that impact will be, but that is reflected in here as well as an estimate, and certainly can be adjusted in the final budget if we have better information at that time.
Okay, and then the next question was relative to the differential from the prior year and this year relative to the special transportation?
It's the same thing. Yep.
So it's a timing issue, then?
It's the five payments versus four.
Okay, and they're at a different, they don't necessarily line up as far as the delta, so it's not based on a factor with number of students or any changes like that?
No, it's the further proration from the state.
Okay. And then, since we did have such a large surplus relative to what the budget last year was, what actions are being taken to put that surplus to use?
Yeah, so again, in the surplus that we had in the fund last year, a portion of that surplus is, just over a million dollars of that, is relative to the fifth payment that was received early. So that is a component of it. It is not excess funding that was received, just the timing of it. There are some additional areas where we ended favorably, one being property taxes, which we'll again adjust in the coming year, and some other areas as well. Some of the things that we have moving forward to adjust the fund balance in this fund include, you can see here that we are not including CPPRT in the budget for next year, so that is, those are funds that we will still continue to receive, but they will be allocated into different accounting funds. The other thing that is in our projection model is that we are showing a decrease in the funds that will be levied into the Transportation Fund for the 2024 levy, which obviously will, has not come to the board, but that is what's included in our financial projection that we have shared with you in the past.
So I'm still not clear. The surplus that's in the Transportation Fund, you're saying you're going to draw that down by levying less in the Transportation Fund next year? Is that the--
That is what is shown in our projection right now, yes. And we will start our levy discussion in September with numbers and a recommendation brought to the board in October.
Okay, so we could assume that the recommendation would include a reduction from what the, what the PTAL cap would be to account for that?
No, it's allocated into different funds.
So it's just a different allocation?
Mm-hmm.
So then, that surplus will sit in the Transportation Fund, is what you're saying, or you'll be planning a budget with a deficit?
I don't recall the fund-by-fund account moving forward, but certainly with the reduction of the CPPRT and the levy, if it's, we will, our expenses in the area will continue to grow and we will have less revenue coming in. I don't remember the exact amount of the surplus or deficit.
Right, my concern is just we're taking, you know, property tax dollars that we received. We had a surplus of $3 million beyond what our budget was projecting. We have another $400,000 surplus this year. Those funds are going to sit in there as a balance without really benefiting anyone, and that's my concern.
And that's why we're recommending, or we are showing right now in the projection the reduction of the funds.
A reallocation, right. I understand.
Yep. And just to clarify, to make sure I understand, just about a million of this surplus is a payment that we received early for services that we have to be compensated for. So it's not just extra money-- It's correct. It's a reimbursement of expenses. That we have to sit on, that we got from our property tax holders. Correct. We have a payment.
No, no, the million-dollar line item in that fund is specific to the corporate personal property tax, correct?
There's, that is one reference to the million dollars. I believe, Ms. Cavill, the million dollars that you're referencing is the fifth payment that was received in the categorical. Yes, I'm talking--
So they're both $1 million?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just over $1 million in the categoricals.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Dombrowski, for putting the questions forward, so we've got good information, and it's important information. So thank you for doing that. And Ms. Hummel, thank you for providing us with the information. All right. Are there any other questions in regards to the Transportation Fund? All right. If not, then that will take us to our presentation this evening on the superintendent's search planning discussion, and I'd like to welcome Karen Sullivan, Brian Harris, and Ken Arnt from Hazard, Young, and Atia and Associates to provide us with the presentation.
All right, so-- Okay. Who else? Looks good. All right.
All right.
Well--
So we're ready when you are.
First of all, board members, thank you so much for the opportunity here. HYA is very excited to be serving you, working for you and with you on this very, very important task of hiring a new superintendent to replace Dr. Small, who will be retiring at the end of this school year. So, big shoes to fill, for sure. So we are, you know, certainly, well, prepared and excited to help you on this journey, and, you know, I'll say this once and maybe we'll say it again, we hope to make your job tough. We hope to put excellent people in front of you and make an excellent, good choice for your next superintendent. So that's our intent, and we hope to exceed those expectations. So tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to spend some time walking through some of the details. This is the planning meeting for the search process, and we welcome your comments and suggestions, and we work for you. So our recommendations here are what they are, and if we need to make adjustments as we move along here, please let us know. And we'd like to walk through the slide deck with you. We might answer some questions that you may have, so if you wouldn't mind just holding your questions to the end, that would probably be best, and then we can go back and look at different slides and information as we proceed. Okay? So tonight, we're going to look at the major tasks and activities. The board clearly has the control of this process. We work for you, and we will offer suggestions and certainly work, you know, and adjust accordingly based on your needs. The primary consultants are the three of us sitting here as we did in the proposal. We will also have a new consultant joining our firm who just recently retired, Janira Walters, who was a retired superintendent from Kankakee. She's going to be joining us periodically, definitely in the focus group work, absolutely in recruiting, and may join us along the way. So she's new to the firm and, but not new to the work, and we're excited to have her join us. So you may see her as well, or see her name on some of the information that comes forward. So we're excited for that as well. The outcomes for tonight is we want to make sure that this is customized to meet your needs. We're going to walk through a calendar of events, and we want to make sure tonight that everybody's comfortable with that. If we need to make adjustments, we will. We did listen to your last board meeting online. Thank you for providing that. It's helpful for us to hear your conversation and hope we made some considerations into that calendar, and we'll walk through that with you. To basically understand the process and what you're embarking on, if you have any questions, you know, now's the time, and we'll clarify. If we don't know the answer, we'll get back to you. Okay? Understand the board's responsibilities, our responsibilities, the online survey. There were a few questions, I think, from last meeting, so we want to make sure that all of that is cleared up, and we'll walk through that together as well. We'll talk about the leadership profile. It's your profile for your superintendent and how we will use it to recruit, and eventually it's a great tool to use as a planning document for the new superintendent and for the board into the future as well, because you're going to be talking with all your community members. And finally, setting the key components, the communications, the layers on all of the details to make this process go smoothly. So I'll turn it over to Karen now, and she is going to just spend a couple minutes refreshing everybody's memory about the stages of the process.
So the next several slides are really about the stages--
So, I'm gonna turn it over to Karen now, and she is gonna just spend a couple minutes refreshing everybody's memory about the stages of the process.
So, the next several slides are really about the, the stages of the process that we've talked with you before, but we're just gonna refresh, and we're gonna make some, you're gonna make some specific decisions on a few of these, um, issues tonight. So, the engage phase is our plan, our planning meeting that we're holding right now. Um, we're gonna talk about how we're gonna survey your stakeholders, when we're gonna need you to make some decisions in that realm. Our interviews and focus groups, another area that we're gonna talk more specifically about in a little bit, um, and need to get some feedback from you and some decisions from you. As Brian mentioned, the, uh, leadership profile, we want to, um, set a time that we present that leadership profile to you. That's a compilation of the information from the survey, from the interviews, um, from the focus groups. It will, um, outline the characteristics of the next leader that you're interested in, also the priorities and goals for the district. Um, it's incredibly useful in our, um, interview process. We tailor our questions relative to those, um, you know, uh, attributes and talents that you want to see, the skills that you want to see in the next leader, um, and what your priorities are. Um, so it's very important, and we'll ask you to look at that as you look at your interview process as well. So, we'll bring the profile to you, and we'll have you, um, approve that profile, and then we do use it in recruiting. We'll have candidates who will ask for that information because they want to make sure that, you know, they're, they know what your priorities are, what you're looking for, and want to make sure that, that they match those things. The recruit phase, um, we will post the job description, um, in the posting as soon as we can get everything together. I know that you're working, I think, approving the job description tonight, so we've got a little bit of prep. We gotta see if there are any changes and make sure that we get that accurately. Um, we'll start recruiting. We actually already have done a little bit of that on the, on the side, uh, but we'll really start actively engaging as soon as it is posted. Um, we will do applications through the HYA, um, system, and that will, will provide a link, um, to that application process, and we'll take a look at those applications. We'll correspond, do all of that, um, piece with the applicants. We will do the initial screening of anyone who is qualified for the position. Um, interview, we'll do the initial, uh, reference checks. We will provide, um, prepare all those application materials for your review on the Board Portal. We'll talk about the Board Portal in a little more detail in a little bit. And we'll begin drafting or giving you some ideas, as in, so, suggestions of potential interview questions. Um, so, that's all part of the recruit phase. In the select phase, you'll see on the planning calendar, we'll want to meet with you to talk and go through an interview workshop, which is some of the, you know, things that you need to think about during the interview process, um, give you some, I, you know, some of the do's and don'ts. You, I know you have an HR expert on your Board who knows the, this is you can ask, and this you can't ask, those kinds of things, but we'll go through all of that as well, and just go step by step through the process, which is what we mean by the script, so that everyone's clear about what the process will look like, um, and just make sure that there aren't any, you know, details overlooked. Um, we will present you a recommended candidate slate. Um, we'll help facilitate those first and second round interviews. We'll debrief with you on that. We've already talked with you previously about doing that due diligence background check, very deep background check on your final candidate, can be your final couple candidates, up to you, but generally, definitely your final candidate. And then if there's any, um, assistance that you need in terms of the contract, we're here to also assist with that.
Communication during the search is something that HYA prides, uh, ourselves on, working with the Boards, and it's also the, been the feedback that we get working with Boards, that they appreciated the communication that we always provided. Uh, the Board will have access to a very secure portal, and on that portal, you will see all the applications that we have received. And, uh, nothing is left out, and so you'll see everything that they submitted, including misspelt words. Uh, email communication, uh, we provide that, uh, to the Board based upon the information we receive from the Board contact, usually that's the Board President, and we give the Board everything that we know at that time, in terms of information. Uh, we will be working on the calendar in just a few moments. We understand there is a conflict with one, but again, it's important for the Board, once you start the interviews, that all seven Board members are present for all the interviews. We mention this because the candidates are also interviewing the Board, and if the Board is not in full attendance, that shows the candidate that maybe this is some place I really don't want to work. So, again, we remind the Board that it's a two-way, uh, process. We provide all the support materials that you need. We are with you from step one to the end. And so, you are never expected to do anything on your own. We make all the contacts with the candidates. We also make the contacts with the candidates that did not make the cut, and we provide all that needed information for the Board. So, the Board just has to focus in on exactly who is the best candidate we feel would serve 211. And again, we help facilitate the interviews. Uh, we generally do not sit in on the interviews, uh, but we certainly help you formulate the interview questions. And again, as Karen mentioned, we also give you the do's and don'ts. And again, we also provide the, we provide the structure, and we also communicate with all the candidates in terms of what time to be here, et cetera. And last but not least, we help with, uh, negotiating the contract. We do not do the, the contract negotiations. That is up to the Board and your Board Attorney, but we provide the Board some, uh, illustrations of what other, uh, Boards have done with their, um, superintendent candidates. And again, we will be spending some time later this, this after, this evening, uh, talking about the, the search calendar because I, it's our understanding that there's a conflict with, uh, the interview week. So, we'll, we'll spend some time near the end of our presentation, working through these.
The, uh, leadership profile development, we've referenced it a couple times. This is a, uh, executive summary document that talks about the, the qualifications and attributes you want in your next superintendent. When we have interviews, and we will be interviewing all of you, one-on-one, we hope, as well as, uh, anybody else you suggest, and, and the focus groups, and also the community forums. Those are the three main areas, right? And we ask the same questions to everybody, whether you're a one-on-one, whether you're in a small group, or whether you're in a large setting with a lot of people. And they focus exactly on these points right here. What are the strengths of the district? What are the challenges of the district? What are the superintendent leadership priorities? Personal attributes, areas of expertise, and then administrative style and management. So, those are the questions, those are the prompts, and we listen. We don't talk, we ask the question, and we listen. And, um, it's, it clearly, uh, becomes a qualitative research project for us, and we, we, uh, see that there are certain attributes and certain qualifications and challenges and, and expectations and strengths of the district that come forward. And that really helps us build who's the best person to be your next superintendent of schools. So, uh, that's the questions we ask, and I'm gonna, can't repeat that enough. We ask the same questions to everybody we talk to. So, if there's, you know, if somebody misses a focus group, somebody, uh, they can come to the community forum, because it's gonna be the same thing. It's gonna be the same process, whether it's staff, whether it's parents, whether it's community members, elected officials, whoever we meet with, okay? We will ask the same questions. So, let's talk at just a, a few minutes about these groups, and these are the suggestions that we recommend. Um, for individual interviews, as I said, we, uh, hopefully, shortly in the next few days, we will schedule a time with each one of you, uh, to have that conversation. Uh, we, we typically do it virtually, but we, we would be happy to come in person if that's required or, and necessary, uh, for you. We want to meet your expectation there. But we want to make it convenient, too. So, it's, it's your decision on that. Uh, we typically recommend, uh, you know, meeting one-on-one with the current superintendent of schools, too, because that person hopefully would be able to provide us some context, uh, for, you know, clarity for us as we, uh, navigate this process with you and for you. Uh, the focus groups, I've broken them into a couple different categories. First category is internal focus groups. Um, district-level administrators, that's, you know, your central office staff. Building leadership, principals, assistant principals, anybody in the leadership, formal leadership role at the building level. We will meet with groups of them across all of your schools. Um, teacher leadership, uh, classified staff leadership. Uh, typically, those are your, um, collective bargaining unit, leadership people. That would be included in those focus groups. Um, booster club leadership. You've got booster clubs across all of your schools, and, uh, we typically like to meet with them as a whole group. It, it really dialogues into a great conversation, uh, sometimes builds some good, in your case, with, you know, they hear each other's thoughts and comments. It's, it's not a bad thing, and it helps us as well. Um, students at every school, we'll go to every school and meet with groups of students. We clearly want to make sure, we work with the building principals there and the superintendent, make sure we have a diverse and representative group. Um, we don't want students that are just student council members. We want kids from all aspects of your student population. We actually enjoy the kids. They have unfiltered, uh, thoughts and comments. Adults all have filters, and, uh, so it's really good to talk to kids because we, it's a very valuable conversation. We enjoy that, quite frankly. It's, it's the, uh, best part of this process. And then finally, special groups, which would include booster presidents, uh, district foundation, which you have, leadership, and then the district equity group of parents as well. We know that that is a very alive and vibrant group as well, so we definitely would recommend meeting with them as a separate focus group. The external groups, uh, we definitely, uh, recommend that we, um, meet with your local district superintendent, your feeder-school group. Uh, that would be, uh, the superintendents, the presidents of, uh, 1554 Harper and NSSEO. Those are your, uh, formal partners, um, in your community. Uh, business and civic leaders, and we certainly would lean on staff for that to get that list of the key people. Those are, um, you know, people you all know, you know, that are in all the service clubs of whatever their connection may be, chambers, groups, whatever they may be. Um, and then finally, the government leadership. That's the elected officials, your, uh, colleagues in the community that are serving in other capacities and elected positions, uh, mayors, police, fire, village managers, people that the district has direct relationships with, because your superintendent is in a lot of those conversations, and we certainly want to hear from that group. It's a strategic, uh, group of people that make things work in your community. So, those are our recommendations for the, um, community engagement piece. Um, and finally, the community forums. This is kind of the catch-all. This is open. Uh, we recommend, uh, that we do, um, a virtual and an in-person. And we have found recently, over the last few years, that we get more turnout for virtual than we do in-person. Uh, you'd be surprised. You will see. We'll see what happens here. Uh, we recommend that we do one for staff that way, um, virtual and in-person, and make sure we don't ever want to have you here or we here that somebody didn't get an opportunity to participate, right? And this is it. And same thing with the public meeting for parents and community. We'll do a virtual session, and we'll do a in-person session, okay? So, again, uh, we, we want to hear from all stakeholders. The questions get asked the same to everybody, whether they're in the large group or whether they're in the small group situations, okay?
I'm gonna talk about the survey, the online survey. So, um, as we shared in our proposal, our survey is a research-based survey. It's not something that the three of us came up with on our own. Um, it's actually based on the research arm of HYA and, uh, looking at effective superintendents, um, and the research base. So, the re- the, um, survey will look at those characteristics, those skills and dispositions that you want to see in your next superintendent, in the area of vision and values, instructional leadership, uh, community engagement, management and operations. And then it'll also look at the goals and the priorities that, um, that you have for the district. So, um, it'll prioritize those that are critical to District 211. So, we, we will talk about making sure that that is on prominently displayed on your website, that there are numerous emails that go out, and reminders we want to get as large of a response as possible. I know that some of you had some concerns about the lack of response in the past, and we, I guess I would share that every district, I think, would hopes that they have more than what they get. Um, but that it's really important that you have the opportunity for all of your stakeholders to give, um, some feedback and some input, um, to this process. So, we are actually, um, working currently on getting those, the Polish and the Ukrainian translations being done currently. Um, so we'll have those ready. Our, um, the, the survey is disaggregated into six groups. So, we have, uh, some recommended groups that we have here, um, to talk about when community members as a group, parents of your students, administrators, support staff, teachers, and students. What's really beneficial, um, for the Board in this survey is to look at that disaggregation and see, what does your community think? Um, what you want to see is some, hopefully, similarity in what the community thinks, what your teachers think, what your students think, what, et cetera. If you see a big disparity, that really tells you something as a Board, um, that there's an area where, you know, the community thinks this, but your staff and, and folks that are inside the school think this. So, it gives you just some things that you can think about and work, um, work toward. Um, it's very helpful for the new superintendent as well to have that background information, and we certainly provide that, and, and will provide that information as part of that, um, leadership profile as well. So, arriving at the preferred candidate, so this is, this is one of those areas where we're gonna, um, ask for, um, decision, and that's whether or not you want a confidential versus an open-style search. Um, we will share our recommendation, and what is typical is a confidential search, meaning that the names of the candidates are not, um, publicly, publicly. Um, our interest is to get you the widest candidate pool and the best candidate pool possible, um, and that happens with a confidential search. When you have an open search, at it, at times, will create a situation where candidates are not willing to, um, apply for that. There are variations. Um, we've seen folks who do a confidential search up until the very end, and maybe they have a couple candidates that they're looking at, and then they may do something public there. But we need to know you, what you want for your process before we get started, because we'll have candidates ask us, or they may simply choose not to apply, or they're willing to apply. You may, uh, understand why, in this particular line of work, uh, the confidentiality is really important. Um, I'm sure that none of you would love to have known that Dr. Small maybe was applying for a position. And if Dr. Small is applying for a position, and her name is out there, and she doesn't get that job, that puts her in a very, you know, a very difficult position with their current school board. But we do need to know what you prefer, and we'll do what, as, as Brian said, I think, four or five times, I already said, we work for you. So, if you have a particular, um, interest, that is something we do need to know before we, uh, start the process.
Do you want the discussion now?
You wanna wait for me?
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we? Well, go ahead on this one right now.
All right. Um, if, am I, if I can have some input from our Board members, Mr. Dombrowski, what are your thoughts?
I prefer an open process.
Ms. Cavill?
I would prefer, uh, a confidential process.
Mr. Rosenblum?
I'd like clarification. Are you talking about when someone applies? Um, when you say confidential versus open, you're saying that we're gonna know as a Board, but the question is whether or not it's publicly communicated that Bill Smith has applied, and here's stuff about Bill Smith. He's currently a superintendent in Michigan, and so on and so forth, for the public to know during the, the process. Is that correct?
That's correct, and there, in most cases, it's not that, well, one, we, we do not want people to know exactly who applies, but when we get to the, here's our recommended slate of candidates. In some states, it's required that that be open. So, if we give you five candidates, then publicly, public knows who those five candidates are.
I'm trying to remember if we did that before or not. It was confidential always?
It's, it's always been confidential.
And then when the person was selected, is, was it at that point, or did we ever share with the public who the other candidates were?
Um, I believe we did not.
Okay.
That's a concern of candidates, too.
Yes.
And for that reason, that Karen already explained.
I'm in favor of a confidential search.
Okay, Mr. Breth?
Confidential.
Ms. Bear?
Okay, and myself confidential also, so that's the consensus of the Board.
Okay, thank you. I mentioned on the application process, we'll have, we have an AppliTrak system. Um, applications will come into HYA. Um, we've already talked about the fact that, you know, you're interested in seeing who applies. We'll get, that will be on your secure Board Portal. Um, we will ask internal candidates to also apply, um, that way, the same as the external candidates, through that same process. This is the other decision, another decision point that we need to make, and that's about this, um, first round of interviews with the Board. Do you have some idea of how many you would like for this slate? We are typ- typically, it's five, seven, five, seven, sometimes. Sometimes people say, bring me 12. Sometimes people say, I only want to see three. We want to know kind of what you think. We will also share with you through the process, if we have, so let's, let's say you say, we- We will also share with you through the process, if we have, so let's, let's say you say we want five candidates. If we say we've got six and we just can't delineate between that five to six, we really think you need to interview six, we will tell you that. If we think that there's a clear break between five and, you know, say you wanted seven and there's a huge break between that five and the other three down here, we'll tell you that. And you can choose to do something differently. But we generally need some idea of how many candidates you would like us to bring forward as a slate, because you are also looking at scheduling those kinds of things.
And may I ask some feedback from the board then? Given the explanation that Ms. Sullivan had just made, are you comfortable with going with their recommendation or do we want to set a number? Ms. Barron?
Um, I'm okay with the recommendation of five.
I would agree.
Okay. Mr. Rosenblum?
I'm comfortable with your recommendation.
Okay. Ms. Cavill?
I'm comfortable with the recommendation because it comes with an asterisk, that we can see everybody and what, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that someone's going to be turned away that we would like to interview.
Right.
Ultimately, we can expand the list at our discretion.
Yes, absolutely.
So with that asterisk, yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
I, I personally would like to see eight ranked candidates presented with the intention to narrow it to four for interviewing.
I, I think the consensus appears to be review the applications, come to us with, with a proposal, and then we can make a final decision in regards to that.
Yeah, we're, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of the salary and compensation, this is certainly something that does not have to be decided immediately, but near the end of the process, you really need to focus in and we will provide regionally competitive salary comparisons and, and other benefits that are provided in other school districts in the Chicagoland area. And last but not least, we would request that all the information regarding the superintendent's search process be prominently placed on your district website for the public to understand exactly what is the timeline, how could they participate in focus groups. The ad will certainly be placed on the district search, search page, how to apply. And again, everything will be right there, front and center for the community to see exactly what is taking place. And we've already spoken with district staff and so they're, they're going to be helping us get this off and running, hopefully within the next week or, or less.
We're at the end here and I just want to highlight a couple of things and then we'll go back and, and talk through some of these details and make sure there's clarity, especially on the timeline. We want to make sure that we're clear on that before we leave this evening. One thing I do, I want to reemphasize is the board portal. And just for clarity, that this will, the only people that have access to this board portal are the three of us and the seven of you. And that's it, okay? Nobody else. Tomorrow, I will send you a link. Anna already had an opportunity to preview it, so, and it worked, which was good. I wanted to make sure before I sent it to the rest of you and so I will, the structure and everything, and it is crystal clear. And we will have, I've already populated it with the documents. This slide deck's on there, as well as every document that we provided to you at this point. You will see the section where the recruitment component, and that's where you will see all the slate of candidates that, or all the candidates that apply. And then we will eventually work through that. We will add things as we go. And so that'll be your access 24/7. I will ask for you to get back to me to make sure you got it, okay? I want to make sure everybody's in. You, and if you ever, you know, you might get a question somewhere in the community and you say, "Hey, let me check." And, you know, you may, you can remember all this stuff verbatim, so you can always go and check and you can get back to that person and that'll come up. That will happen as we, you know, two months down the road, you might get a question and you can go back and let, say, "Oh yeah, I know where to get that." And I can go back and look and, and be able to be clear in the communication. So that's a really helpful tool that you will be able to see. And we will reference it as we work with you through the process over the next few months, okay? So at this point, we are going to stop. You all have our contact information. There's, contact us anytime. We were, we are very responsive. We will, one of us will get back to you as soon as possible and we want to make sure that you have what you need to, to make this important decision, okay? So what questions can we ask? We know we need to spend a little time on the calendar or the timeline of the events. Other than that, maybe let's start with other things and then we can get to the calendar events. That make sense? Or however you'd like to proceed.
All right. Let me start, Ms., any questions, Ms. Barron?
No, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bradley?
None at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenblum?
I do, I do have a couple. One is, our primary point of contact will be our board liaison. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay. And are we in consensus as a board that our board liaison will be the board president for communication and interaction with H Y A? Is that something we should discuss or is that?
I'm comfortable with that.
You've taken me by surprise here, so.
Yeah, I didn't think that was a topic of the conversation.
Okay. Given, okay. And I'm in agreement with that as well. So slides 10 through 12 around community engagement. The last slide you had was the open meetings. And on that particular slide, you, you mentioned virtual and in-person. And my question is, for the internal and external groups that were specifically identified on slides 10 and 11, I think it was, because I think 12 was the open group, will those also be virtual and in-person? And my question, and it didn't say either, and I just want to make sure that just like the, the general population has an opportunity to go virtual or in-person, because we know different people have different availabilities and, and abilities to attend one or the other, I want to make sure that we open the same, same chances for our internal and specifically identified external groups.
We, the answer is yes and yes. So what we typically do is work with the superintendent or staff and we say, "Okay, let's just pick one." The teacher leadership. Is it better that we meet in-person with the teacher leadership or is it, to their convenience, is it better that we set a time at 6:00 PM in the evening, right, type of thing? So we will, it's situational, truthfully. Some groups, like your booster group, that one typically is virtual because it's just hard, because some people can still do it on the phone, right? They can be somewhere at an event and jump in and listen and contribute and not have to be at a location. So it kind of depends on the groups. And I've seen it different ways in different places, but we want to make sure we get the best participation possible. So, you know, like with your principals, it, sometimes it's better that all five of them be in the room, right? And we schedule a time with staff and we do it probably right here in this office, right? But maybe like your deans or your department chairs, we might do those online in the evening where they've got more time and flexibility, right? So I'm just using some examples, but we would defer to staff on that and be, you know, flexible in how that is set up.
Students, we typically do in-person.
Yeah. Students are in-person.
Person.
Okay.
Your, your community people, same thing. I mean, we're going to do what works best for those people. We'll go either way. We either come here or we will get on the screen with, and to, you know, meet their needs.
Or maybe a combination of both.
We have done that. It depends. Yeah, because we don't want to exclude, if we see that we're not getting what we need, you know, if we don't get enough people or they're not able, then we'll switch and we'll, yeah, we will do it.
But I've even seen meetings where it's in-person and people are able to, to call in.
Oh, a hybrid.
Yeah.
A hybrid-type model.
We've done that.
Okay. And then my other question, I only have one other, is I would, I would assume that you're closely going to be collaborating with our director of communication with regards to getting the word out. And we also, as a district, I didn't see on your slide around communication. I saw websites and some other things, but I didn't see social media for the online survey.
Absolutely.
And I know as a district, we use social media to communicate the superintendent video. We also have school newsletters that might be a good avenue for you to communicate out to parents and, and other people in the community.
Principals are key.
But I would think you're going to be communicating with our director of communication on all of these things.
People read the principal's newsletter and if that's at the top of the principal newsletter, you know, during our window here, it's key. They really, it really is important. And your staff knows that, but we will, you know, be recommending that, highly recommending that, absolutely.
Thank you.
I might also add that when we're speaking about virtual, we request to use the 211 address. Otherwise, if we use the H Y A address, people think we're trying to sell them something and so they don't participate. So again, we have to really work closely with your staff to make sure people know that there's an official communication coming from 211.
Yeah, we'll work with your staff to who's the right person to send that. Because they see the kids, right? You know, sometimes they just ignore us, they, "Who's this?" Right? We all do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cavill?
Yeah, I had a couple of follow-up. So I'm looking at slide 12, the community engagement piece. And I most, I most honed in on the virtual versions of these forums about language transit, translation. So you said before, you know, you generally ask the same questions each time, and I know we're working on translation, that was notated in other pieces of the presentation, but I was wondering, because it's usually the same questions being posed, are we going to have bare minimum written translations of those questions in our various, like, you know, I'm thinking Polish, Spanish, etc., the recommended languages? Again, director of comms might be helpful here about which ones would be most applicable.
It's a great question. What we typically do in those, like the open forum, right? The one that's open to the community, we will actually rely on the district for, with support. They, those parents and community members typically like to see a familiar face and they usually know who they are. And that helps now. H Y A can get some, and we would have somebody, however, we usually rely on the district because it's just a better, you know, process and familiar face. We haven't talked about that detail with staff, but we will figure that out to make sure everybody's communicated with. Well, in the open forums too, we have a printed handout. Because if we have 10 people show up, we can have a very inclusive conversation. However, if we have a room full of 65, 75, 125 people, we, you know, it's a little different set. It's, we will facilitate whoever shows up and we usually have a handout and we'll have it in the various languages to make sure that people can respond accordingly.
Okay.
And I believe that we were also looking at, excuse me, our communications director, Erin Holmes, you know, helping out with that and, you know, some other direction from, from Dr. Small as to how we can communicate everything.
But if we need to provide that, we'll work it out, but, you know, usually the district has the best resource.
Yeah, we had preliminary discussions at the presentation about this, but now that we're in the nuts and bolts, I just wanted to make sure that that was highlighted.
Great question.
Appreciate that. My next question has to do with slide 13 in the online survey. You know, of course, you, you said, "We never get as many responses as we'd like. We get a lot of surveys," and I, I understand that. I wanted to ask some security-related questions, you know, just to make sure that the survey that's going out to all these, you know, a very wide range of people, when you look at community members, essentially anybody who wants to participate. How are we making sure that people's participation is secure? You know, how, how are we making sure that the website they're participating on is secure? Is that survey allowing anonymous participation? Does that survey have mechanisms or two-factor authentication to prevent automated entries, for example? These are the question. I want to make sure that the results that we get from that survey aren't just wide in who takes it, but actually accurate and representative of the people that we're targeting.
Well, I know that they're able to, someone can take it twice because they can be a teacher and a parent. So I mean, we don't dissuade people from doing that, but it, it is a secure website that H Y A and the Accra Group has. So they have all those security kinds of provisions. They can tell when someone's, or if some bot wants to, you know, work on your survey. However, I don't know that we have ever seen issues. We want to be prepared for those, but I don't know that in our experience.
But that question comes up with every board. And, and so H Y A is told, it's impossible to game the system, okay? Because if somebody, it'll trigger a, a alert that somebody's trying to game the system and it'll, it'll just shut that person off.
We will, we will, Dr. Harris and I had the experience where we did shut down the servers.
Yeah.
In one particular case, because one of the high schools, we were, the students all took it at the same time and it crashed the server. There were so, so I do, I will say there has been at least one instance, we were thrilled with the.
We created a problem for our office staff. They called us and said, "What's going on?"
What's going on?
I can only imagine.
All the kids at the high school are taking it at the same time.
I mean, that's the way you get participation.
But we got great, we had the best participation for that particular, that particular survey. So we, I will want to work with the building principals on that.
I mean, at minimum, it sounds like it has an annoying robot, "Are you a robot test?" That we're all, we all, you know.
It's exact, and it was all coming from the same IP address because it was coming out of the school server. So yeah, it was, but we learned our lesson. So, you know, with your high schools, we will coordinate accordingly. And when, when the students take it, you know, what they, we usually work with the principals and you want to get, students are the easiest because you just set aside 10, 15 minutes in a day and, one day and you.
Right.
Ask them to do it. But we want to stagger that on our end so it doesn't crash it again.
Okay.
There was a concept that came up at the last board meeting surrounding the survey and the open-ended question. The open-ended question is a part of the survey.
It is.
And anybody who types anything in there, that is how it is presented, correct? If you can talk about that just a little bit.
Unedited.
We do not edit that at all and we certainly recommend that that's not something that you put out publicly.
You can if you want.
You can if you want.
It's your call. It'll be a separate, you will get the.
You'll get it totally separate.
Yeah, it'll be a separate document with all the comments and it's verbatim.
Thank you. Mr., Ms. Cavill, you're done?
No, I had another question, but it was related to the timeline, so I'll sit on it for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Piggybacking, and thank you for the presentation, by the way. Piggybacking on the online survey, you, you gave us six groups. Your definition for the community group is that, because the external focus group had community defined as like police officers, elected officials in the community, and then we had the external open. When, when we look at that online survey, is that community, how do, how do you define that community in your recommendation?
Well, that's really anybody who isn't in any of those other categories, but lives within your.
So it's not the same as the focus group?
No.
Okay. So those are two different definitions.
Those were really specifically trying to get those, those people.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Is the survey redundant to the questions at the focus group?
No.
Or is it, okay, so it's tailored for individuals with, okay, so when you were referencing parent versus teacher, those are two different surveys, correct?
No, they're just responding to the.
Same question.
They're just providing input from a different perspective.
From a different perspective.
Okay, but they're, they're all identical. And the student survey would be the same as the parent's survey?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So if you log in as a parent, you log in as a community member, you're going to see the same survey.
Okay. And then these surveys are open to anyone or are they by invitation only?
Everybody.
Every, yeah.
We'll put the link on your website, social media.
Okay.
We'll push it out everywhere they click on it. Use on your, it's very good, use your interface on a phone. It looks really good and easy to navigate.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. All right. I do have a question which would lead us into the timeline.
Okay.
I know one of the first timeline activity that we're looking at is our leadership I know one of the first timeline activity that we're looking at is our leadership profile to be presented to the board. I have six board members that have responded. So Thursday, August 29th appears to be the date that we can do that, at 5:30 PM. I'm just missing one board member, so I will have to follow up with that individual.
Sorry, can you repeat that, please?
It's Thursday, August 29th at 5:30 PM. And that's the leadership profile presented to the board. Okay?
Will that be here?
It'll be here. It will be here. The others, the board initial interviews and the semifinalist interviews, it's really difficult to come up with a time where all seven of us can be here, from the dates that we had sent out to the board members. Question I have is, if we have, say, five or six candidates, how many would you recommend us interviewing in an evening?
Well, in an evening, you know, in the initial round, you're going, you're probably an hour to hour fifteen, maybe an hour thirty at the max on the first-round interviews.
Per candidate?
Yeah, per candidate. So you might be able to do three in an evening, you know, like, if you start at 5:00 and go till 9:00 type thing. I'm just estimating here. And, you know, I wouldn't go much later than that. Everybody's tired, including candidates, as well as all of you. So if you started earlier, you know, you might be able to get an additional one in. Now, if you do it over two separate evenings, we highly recommend you do them close together, like, either back-to-back nights or definitely, you know, within a day or two, just for your convenience, right? Because you're going to hear all these people, and you want to, you know, be able to deliberate in your own, your own perspective on that.
And also, when you have time between, you lose.
Yeah, perspective.
Perspective.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, we've actually had boards, and I've had, seen this a lot, and I know all of us have, that will, if they can't find a common time at all seven, you can be there during the week, you pick a Saturday. You know, if you're going to have five, in this case, where that's the target, but you may have a few more, you may have, you know, something like that, you could start it, I've had boards do it, start at 8:00 in the morning, they go till 5:00 in the afternoon, and they not have them all in one day. It's a long day, but it, you know, take a little break in the middle and then deliberate at the end of that time. That happens a lot. I've seen it even on Saturday and then on Sunday, in the afternoons, where you, you know, again, it's your time, how many people you're going to meet with, one it looks like. That tends to work. And quite frankly, it works really well for your candidates, too. I mean, they're busy people, a lot of them. And so, you know, you don't have, you can do it whenever. They'll come whenever you want to meet. But, you know, I'm just giving you a perspective that I've seen many times happen in other places.
We just ask to be like jury duty. You really, you want to start talking about each candidate, you have to wait until the last one is interviewed before you actually start to debrief.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Quick question. Are we all in concurrence that the first interview is required to be in person?
Are you suggesting a virtual interview with all the candidates or a mixed? Tell me what your thoughts are.
Well, I think a virtual interview in the first interview process might make it more accommodating for board members if there's conflicts, and potentially for out-of-state candidates that would have to take maybe several days off to travel. I think that might be a, an option that might be of benefit.
Give me some feedback.
Are we considering interviewing candidate, as a board, interviewing the same candidates more than once?
Well, the initial interview, and then if they pass...
Initial interview by the board or the initial interview by HYA?
Well, we will screen them all.
They're going to screen.
We'll do all that.
We're talking about the board.
We're talking about the board. The board's initial interview.
The first round and second round, I guess.
Say if there's five candidates that they're recommending to us, we need to interview all five candidates. So how do we want to do that? It sounds like Mr. Dombrowski has suggested possibly virtual interviews?
With the required in-person for a second interview?
Personally, I would definitely want to see the person in-person for the finalist interviews, semifinalist interviews. I think that that's really important, to be able to see the person, interact with the person in, well, in person.
Madam President, are there, forgive me, but, are there Open Meetings Act restrictions around this? Wouldn't there be, we'd have to make sure that we are in alignment with the Open Meetings Act if we are conducting a closed session, but virtual interviews. I just want to make sure that, and I'm not aware off the top of my head that there'd be any conflict, but I'm also not aware that that would be immediately allowable either. We're kind of in uncharted territory.
That's a valid point. I'm not certain, I don't have an answer.
And I'm not certain if we had more than one interview for candidates the last time we selected a superintendent. I don't remember having second interviews with the same candidates last time.
Not unless you want to.
I don't recall our doing that last time.
The second interviews are generally, you're narrowing your field down. So, I mean, it could come out of your first interview, and you could decide, "We found the one that, I guess, can happen." But generally, folks have narrowed it down to two candidates, sometimes three.
That come for a second interview.
That come for a second interview.
Which is, again, the second interview is usually much longer. Usually two, three hours, maybe even a, you know, a meal there. It's a little more informal. You may ask them to do a work product and present to you, things like that, that would be a typical work.
A performance.
Yeah, a performance component, okay? And that's the second interview. That's, that would be the semifinalist, right? When you narrow it down. You really want to get to know this person at a different level. And that's how we would recommend that.
So I also remember, if I remember correctly, from the last time we interviewed candidates, we started in open, went to closed, conducted interviews, came back and adjourned the meeting. Went back to open and then adjourned the meeting, if I remember correctly.
All interviews would be in closed session.
And we also allowed for public comment before we went into closed, you know, followed the OMA rules of the meetings.
Absolutely.
Should the board decide to have any of the rounds be virtual? If a board member is not in attendance, they would have to follow the same requirements as if they were not in attendance to this meeting, for the reasons why they're not in attendance that allows them to call in.
But the candidates can come in virtually at your request, if you want to do that.
Right, we could set up a projector, and then if there's a quorum here for open meeting, we have our start, and then the other members could participate, could participate in closed session remotely along with the candidate that...
All right. And just to clarify what Dr. Small said, so if the board member is not present, we have to meet the Open Meetings Act requirements?
Yeah.
I mean, I would be more comfortable if we would just double-check with legal, you know, always err on the side of caution. But I, that sounds right to me. I believe so. But just because it sounds right to me, I would like a lawyer to say that that's actually correct. I would like to check.
All right. So that takes us back to our board initial interviews of the candidates. At this time, if we had, you know, five candidates and we needed two dates, right now, from the list that I have, I don't have two dates where all seven members can be here. So what I'd like to do is...
Saturdays are, especially once a school year picks, I'm perfectly open to Saturdays. My schedule suits Saturdays. You know, I'm not speaking for anybody else, of course. But Saturdays are open for me, or I can make them open with enough notice, if that helps.
All right. Mr. Dombrowski, would a Saturday work for you?
It depends on which Saturday. I, I mean, I was presented with, like, 15 dates, and I made sure I was available for all 15 dates. So before I can commit, you'd have to...
I understand that. But you would possibly be open to doing it on a Saturday?
It, I don't object to a Saturday if I have no conflicts.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rosenblum?
I feel the same. I'd have to look at my calendar to see my availability, but I'm not objecting to a Saturday.
Mr. Bradley?
Weekends are hard, no, for me.
Ms. Barron?
Yeah, I'm open to Saturdays. I would just need to know what Saturdays we're looking at.
Let me explore some dates. Can, the hope was that board members would have all responded by today, prior to today's meeting, so I would have had something in writing that I could share with all the board members. Right now, I have some limited information here.
Madam President, I just, I wonder if our timeline is a little too tight, to be honest with you. You know, I wonder if that, I know I wasn't present for the last meeting, I know there was some discussion about that, I, you know, watched the video, et cetera. But I wonder if that's part of the issue that we're currently experiencing with dates? I mean, hiring the superintendent is our number-one job. Like, that is, that is our number-one priority as a board. And so it's really important that we all work as a team to try and make this happen in terms of our availability. I know that's very difficult with seven working people who have families, et cetera. But it is very important. And I wonder if we need to give ourselves another week or two more time, if that would help? I'm not sure.
May I hear from the other board members? What are your thoughts on that? If we do move the meeting dates further into, you know, into October, that might delay the date of hiring the superintendent instead of the 17th. And I know we took a motion on that. So if we do change that, then I'm going to need another motion. But I'd like to hear from board members, what are your thoughts on that? If we look at past, I know we have some holidays, we have Rosh Hashanah, that's October 2nd and 3rd. If we were to have our meetings right after that, possibly that might open up some dates. I honestly don't know without putting something together on the calendar and getting it out to everyone. Mr. Bradley, your thoughts?
Yeah, to Mr. Dombrowski's point, there were quite a few dates already presented. So I'll go back and re-assess some of those dates and put my name on them. But I don't think we need to push it back any further.
Hey, Mr. Rosenblum?
Other than those two holidays later in the, in the process, I indicated my availability for everything except those two holidays. If we needed to push it back, I have no objection to that. Because to Ms. Cavill's comment, this is huge. This is one of our absolute top priorities as a member of the Board of Education. And, and sometimes we need to make accommodations, and sometimes we need to make accommodations with the schedule as well, so.
I can, for one, it was a little bit of short notice for me, but I will send out, I will communicate with my second and third-string backup childcare providers and see if I can free up more of those dates on the last weekend that I, that suggested here, September 30th through October 4th. I'll aim to free up a few more of those dates than I already had.
All right. And Mr. Bradley, you're going to take a look at your schedule. All right. Mr. Dombrowski, what are, what are your thoughts?
I'm available all 15 dates you provided, Madam President. I agree that this is of the utmost importance, and I, I've made sure that I'm available. I've changed plans to accommodate these dates.
I thank you very much for doing that. Michelle, Ms. Barron?
Yeah, I'll look at the dates again, and I'll fill it out again to put myself down for more availability.
All right. Let me ask this. Would there be a consensus to add a few more dates early part of October, which might change the hiring date from the 17th to maybe the following week? Can you give me some feedback on that? Would, if we were to look at a few other dates early in October?
Well, I think, once again, for me, I will go back and look at the dates that have already been presented before we make a decision to add additional dates. It may not be necessary.
I can tell you the, simply because of family stuff that I don't feel like I should have to be able to get into, I can tell you my availability. I know I had a couple of dates on there that I couldn't make work during that week, but I'm significantly more open from Sunday, you know, it looks like probably the evening of Sunday, October 6th, essentially moving forward through the month.
All right. We've got some mixed activities here. Let me ask this. If we put, we know that if we have at least five candidates, we're probably going to need two evenings back-to-back. Let us put this information out. I'm going to ask Dr. Small if we can send the calendar out again with the knowledge of at least having, you know, two meetings very close, back-to-back.
On this week. That's here on the timeline, September 30th through October 4th.
Right.
This is the target problem week, right?
Let's, let's take a look at that, get that back as soon as possible, and we can go from there.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
So we, we've already resolved the initial interviews, correct? Or is the discussion to move the initial interviews to the beginning of October? I'm not understanding.
We, because what was the date? The 29th of August at 5:30? Isn't that...
That is the leadership profile presented to the board. So that one, you know, we've got six of us that can attend. I have one person who has not responded to the dates. I need to find out if they're able to do that.
And on that, if somebody can't make that one, we'll give it to you in advance, and you can give feedback, okay?
The ones that we're concerned about is the board initial interviews. And that's important, that we be, all be able to, to be there. And there are some people who are not able to come on the dates.
I thought it was both the interview dates, right? Both weeks?
Both weeks.
It was my misunderstanding.
Yeah, no, it was both, both weeks. So what I'm asking is, can we add a few more dates to it? Send the calendar, send this request out again and see what dates people would be available, knowing that we need at least two days back-to-back. Maybe for the semifinalist, we may only need one date. Or, as was said earlier, with that initial interview, maybe we select our person right then and there.
I'd like to make a recommendation. And that is that the initial interviews and the semifinalist interviews weeks availability request, as well as perhaps the week after that, be sent, so the initial interviews and semifinalist interviews that have already been sent to the board members asking for their availability, be resent to the members of the board. And perhaps, and we could talk, you know, maybe reach consensus, adding the additional week on there, because there may be someone who wasn't available for the board initial interviews week, but can make changes for the second interviews week, and then that becomes the initial interview week. And then the week after that, maybe there's greater or still availability to accommodate that.
It sounds like it's essentially a choice between either making ourselves available on a weekend or potentially looking at availability for a third week. So I have no opinion between the two of those. I'm happy to do whatever it sounds like from previous comments Mr. Bradley would prefer, I don't know, between the two of those. Hopefully, we don't even have to get to that, right? If we redo our availability with the reminder of how important this is. But should we need it, what's the decision? Either an extra week of, you know, workday availability evening, meaning Monday through Friday, or are we open to a weekend, like, pick your poison, what would it be? I'm open to either.
All right. Because we had a motion to have a set date for the hiring of our superintendent, I'm asking if you would like to make a motion that we may be possibly extended for a week, which might give us extra time to be able to allow for these interviews.
I think before we make a motion to change the hire and public announcement date change, we first reevaluate our availability as a board. Because if the availability requests get sent back out and the responses come back that we are available, in fact, the initial two weeks, then there's no need for a motion to change the date. And we still have our August meeting if we, if we need to make a change, to make that change.
All right.
We would suggest that you really get, try to get this firmed up at your August meeting. That's the bottom line here, right?
I beg your pardon?
To get this firmed up by the August meeting, because then that gets everybody's calendars and, and our timeline. If you have to adjust then, you know, it would be obvious, right? That you might then hold, because you're October 17th, that's your regular board meeting. That's why we put that on there. It's very common for boards to have a special meeting, right? Yeah, I mean, you could go back, you know, go to October 24th, have a special meeting, hire your new superintendent with only one agenda item, right? I mean, that, that's very common. We see that. There's things that happen sometimes. There's, you know, we're just saying, you might have to have a little flexibility. You still would get the person hired by October, just may not be on the 17th. That's what we, it depends on what you do here. But that's something to consider, okay?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
May I also request that if we will resubmit the survey per Mr. Rosenblum's suggestion, that if we can do a virtual meeting, if the survey for that availability also include the option for board members to attend remotely?
All right. Yeah, we'll, we'll check with it and find out about the Open Meetings Act, make certain that we're, we're doing that correctly.
Assuming it's for childcare, for work, or any of the other extenuating circumstances.
Yes. All right. Is there consensus for that, then? We're going to add a few more dates to it, and we'll see where we go. And hopefully, hopefully, that will work. Ms., we, yeah, we need to, we need to. Ms. Barron, is that okay? Does that work for you?
Yes, that works for me.
Okay, all right. So we're at least good for the leadership profile presented to the board, which would be Thursday, August 29th, beginning at 5:30 PM?
Very good.
Okay. Okay, all right, I think you... Any other questions?
I only had one suggestion about the timeline. It's actually for Dr. Small. I noticed that, you know, with the first day of classes coinciding with the availability online survey, I was wondering if we can make sure to advertise that survey at the schools themselves, first day of class, and any warm-up activities that our schools might be hosting.
Sure.
Got to take advantage of the crowds when they're there, right?
And, and it might go either way, where people are really attentive, and they're paying attention to everything, and they're doing it, or they're overwhelmed. So, we have to try.
We've got to try.
All right. Anything else in regards to our presentation for our planning discussion here? Do you need anything further from us?
Who would you like us to work with relative to the survey?
Just finalizing everything.
Finalizing everything.
What do, what do you mean, finalizing everything?
What we've, when we have the link, when we have the, one final look at the surveys, that we've got all, you know, how that will be disseminated, just who we should work with.
All right, can I work with?
Erin?
With Erin? Who do you typically work with?
It varies. Sometimes it's a communication person, sometimes it's the administrative assistant, sometimes it's...
Superintendent.
The superintendent.
Sometimes it's a board president. It, it's just some logistics.
So there are, there are certain things that are going to go to our Director of Communications. There are certain things that my assistant needs to provide. If the board is willing, I would prefer to be the point person, because I can quickly get it to the right person who needs to do that work.
I would graciously accept that, because you're right here and you know what's going on and how to direct it.
It's, it's logistics, is all it is.
Yeah, we're just talking about logistics.
Yeah. All right, so then Dr. Small will kind of coordinate that. All right, any other questions for us?
I think that's it.
I think that's...
I'm going through the planning document right now.
Hold on, we're, let's take one more double check before...
Well, the one thing we didn't, you, you mentioned it, and that's if you're going to reimburse candidates for travel for interviews. So if you do have someone on the slate that we recommend, who's maybe from out of state, we, that is something we would need to know, whether or not you have, you know, a willing, willingness to reimburse for travel.
All right, input from the board? Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Cavill?
I'm open, but we'd have to clarify who's entitled to what, like a driving time of, for example, three hours versus a flight from out of state? I mean, you know, are we compensating someone for, you know, sixty minutes of gas? Like, there needs to be some sort of a boundary drawn, drawn around that for me to be most comfortable.
What we typically recommend is follow your district standards for employee travel. It just, you know, don't get, you know, extravagant, yeah, type of thing. That's what we recommend. But you can just set the guidelines for whatever you want, though. But you've already got a policy in place and a procedure, I'm sure, for, you know, you know, hotels and that type of thing.
But if they live in the Chicagoland area, boards generally do not reimburse.
No, no. It's only out of state.
Only out of state.
Out of state.
We don't know if we'll have any candidates out of state. We just don't know.
All right, do you need, you, do you need an answer right this evening? No, this is something we can think about, and we can...
Soon, with, by the August meeting.
Talk about it a little bit more in August. We can see about getting some more information. Mr. Rosenbloom, your thoughts?
Couple, couple thoughts. One is, I would expand the words "out of state," because we have a state, we have a couple of states not too far. So maybe out of state or a radiological, is that the right word? Distance to, to our interview. Also, if we're going to be doing initial interviews virtually, like it sounded like that was the plan, then we would only really be making these accommodations for the in-person interview for the select few or couple that we end up. So I don't see it being extravagant, like, you know, if you give us eight people, we're not going to be reimbursing eight people for their travel. So, so I'm fine with, with doing that as well.
We need more information.
A little bit more. Mr. Bradley?
And that would be a direct reimbursement to the district from the candidate. We would help facilitate it, but it's between the candidate and the district.
Yes.
And I'm in agreement with Mr. Rosenbloom and Mr. Dombrowski. With these first interviews, potentially they will be virtual, so there wouldn't be any travel noted there, anyway, so.
Ms. Barron?
It was a little hard to hear. Can we, can you repeat the question, please?
It's in regards to travel, about reimbursing a candidate. What are your thoughts in regards to that? And it came up about some of our states, the surrounding states are not that far, about do we reimburse a candidate for travel? Just some thoughts right now, and we can talk about this a little bit more at our March, or, excuse me, at our August meeting.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with reimbursing folks coming in to interview, and we can follow, I think I heard somebody say, following the policy that we already have for employees at the district.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We, we also have a, Madam President, we also have our, our reimbursement policy for board members. That could also be a applicable guideline.
Okay, and we'll, we'll take a look at that, and, and we can discuss it a little bit further than in, in August.
Correct. Two other quick things.
Okay.
Advertising options, we would recommend that we just stick with the standard scenario at this point. If we see after, you know, several weeks or whatever, we're not getting the candidate pool, we may come back to you and say, hey, you know, we maybe need to ramp this up, but we've got excellent reach, and you, you have the services you use for any position you advertise for, we will highly recommend. We will prepare everything, and we'll ask your staff to push that out in, whatever, you know, routes you typically use, that works well. And we will use all of ours on our end, okay? So we wouldn't not recommend, we just want to confirm that, going beyond that at this point. Is that acceptable to the board?
Is there consensus?
Yes.
I see nodding, okay. Ms. Barron? Ms. Barron, about the advert...
Can you repeat that? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't hear you ask for it, but we just, that was the one thing, it was on our list. We wanted to make sure.
You had said something about advertising.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Last thing. We will be reaching out soon. We always like to meet with the board members first in our initial conversation, before we start the focus groups and that. So hopefully in the next week or two, we can get thirty to forty-five minutes of your time with at least two of us. We'll try, if all three of us are available, we'll be there, but we'll, we'll definitely look forward to conversations with all of you, and talk about your expectations for this role, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking us through this and presenting all this information to us.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
See you soon.
All right, that takes us to our next recommended action, and that is that board policy file, CBA, Qualifications and Duties of Superintendent, be modified as proposed and added as an act of board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye, the motion carries. Next item is under new business, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education renew its membership in EdRed for the 2024-2025 school year at a fee of $5,350. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Dr. Small?
I know, I've done some discussions.
Nope, okay, all right, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye, the motion carries. Next recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Anna Klimkowitz to extend, attend the Triple I Conference, November 21st to the 24th, and Steve Rosenbloom to attend the Triple I Conference, November 22nd to the 24th, 2024, as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye, the motion carries. Next item is potential topics for future, future discussion. Hearing none, we'll move to the committee reports. Community and Family Services Report. Ms. Barron, I don't know if there's anything to report at this time.
Nope, not at this time.
All righty, thank you. That will then take us to announcements and our upcoming events in the calendar. Our first day of classes is going to be August 12th, so it'll be right around the corner. All right, then that takes us to... For the closed session, because it is listed here, I will read the recommendation and then we'll look for a motion on it. That the board enter closed session to discuss appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, roll call?
Ms. Barron?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No, the motion fails. All right, that takes us to our last couple of items here. The recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Yacilla Delgado, effective June 2028, consistent with the master contract of the D-211 Teachers Union. Holly Gannon, effective May 2028, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Paula Hill, effective May 2028, according to the master contract of the District, D-211 Teachers Union. Amy Olson, effective December 2028, according to the master contract of the D-211 Teachers Union. Jennifer Sterns, effective December 2028, according to the master contract of the D-211 Teachers Union. Agada Tartar, effective May 2028, according to the master contract of the D-211 Teachers Union. And Jose Zapita, effective December 2028, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye, the motion carries. Next item is the recommended action that the closed session minutes of December 14th, 2023, January 25th, 2024, February 22nd, 2024, March 21st, 2024, April 25th, 2024, and May 16th, 2024, no longer require confidential treatment and are to be approved and placed